Okay, well, it looks like it's seventh and we have Jonathan here and I thought I saw John Hammond as well, so I'll do attendance by roll, Mr. Fitch.
Present.
Mr. Hammond.
Present.
Ms. McBride is present, we have a quorum. Mr. Lavi and Mr. Callahan don't seem to be present tonight. So first item on the agenda, oh, sorry, this is the the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Sherborne zoning board of appeals. And the first item on the agenda is a petition for a finding for to to rebuild and extend a preexisting nonconforming deck that is attached to a preexisting nonconforming dwelling at thirty Main Street in Sherborne. Um, I think that's you, Mr. Constantine, how are you?
Good, good, how's your moment?
Good, um, do you have um, any plans or anything to share with us this evening or?
Yeah, if you wanna give me the uh.
That's a good, that's a good question, how to do that, uh, Jean, Jean is not here tonight, so this is it's not my usual, I'm not used to Zoom, so I'll do my best. You not share, I have to do something to?
I have a green button below, I'll hit that, this says share.
Yeah, you could try that.
Can you see my screen?
Yep.
We, and we can see your menu, yeah, and if you could just give us a quick background on the project, what the plans are, just so we have context to what you're.
Absolutely, so, um, I live at thirty two thirty four North Main Street and um, the house next to me, thirty North Main Street, came on the market about, about six or seven years ago, I ended up purchasing it. It's been kind of a slow slow progress getting it to go, we had to make changes with the uh, the property itself, um, the, the septic, everything, everything had to be changed on it. But we're pretty much there right now, so um, the house itself is, is pretty old, it's seventeen eighty-two, so the house was built um, during the American Revolution. And uh, it's still standing, I think it's the fifth or sixth oldest house in Sherborne. So can, can you see the picture of the house?
Uh, we can, but you might want to blow it up, because right now we can only see your sort of files with uh, different options for plans and some photos.
Okay, um, hmm. Not sure. Let me.
Uh, it's a deck in the back of the house, is that, is that what you're planning?
The deck is so I can, I've got this, I don't know how I can share the whole window, it's the only thing I don't know how to do. Share. Do you know what I have to do to share the?
Open any of those files?
You don't, you double click on any of those layouts or?
I did, I opened, I opened one up, but it didn't pop into the window, let me do a stop share. Hang on a second, let me try this again, so we'll go share.
Yeah, you can either share your screen or share that particular window.
Got it.
Yeah.
So it says screen. Let me try sharing this screen, see if that works better.
Yeah, now bring up, bring up that window.
And now if I bring this up into yeah, I'm not still not letting me try to share. Uh, oh, here we go, application windows, let me try that, share. Can you see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so this is the south facing side of the house. Um, and the deck is in place, you can see it here, um, and extends along the south side of the house, and then I'll do the next picture. And then this is the back, the east side of the house. Uh, and that's an existing deck, so what I wanna do is, let me try this. One, two, here. Okay, can you see that? That's the, the plan.
We're not sharing anymore, but uh, maybe if you were.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, good, good, so what I wanted to do here is kind of show side by side what it, what, what it looks like, so the the image on the left hand side is the existing deck, and you can see the dimensions for that, um, of what it is, and then on the image in the right hand side, that's proposing to do, so so many key measurements are the the edge of the deck here is thirty-eight feet to the street. And then the newer deck's gonna be twenty-nine point two inches. And the other key measurements are, right now, the deck's five feet, six inches wide, um, and I'd like to extend it to, to seven feet.
Um, and the setback, you're in, you're in an RA district, correct?
Correct.
Um, and what's the distance to the side of your lot?
So the, the south side, which is facing um, Ray Weiss's property, uh, from the deck to his property line is forty-one feet.
Currently, it's forty-one feet?
Correct, so that'll
It'd be thirty.
Right, by a foot and a half.
Yeah, I think I think generally the you have a sixty-foot setback to the street and a thirty-foot side and rear, correct, so um, that's the sort of standard for RA. Um, I think the issue, the concern that I would have would be increasing the deck along the south side of the house towards the street, because you're you're continuing, you're increasing the area of encroachment on the sixty-foot setback.
It, so the sixty-foot setback, is that to the property line or to the, the structure?
Uh, it should be to the structure, so it's a property line, it should be property line to structure. So you're telling me it's thirty-eight feet to the street, so that's probably close to the property line, right?
Right, right, but the, for the south facing side that faces Ray Weiss's property, so it's, it's gonna be let, let's call it thirty-nine feet to the property line, and then from the property line to Ray's structure, it's gonna be more, I didn't measure that piece.
Yeah, um. I'm not sure what we've done, I know we've done, I mean, I know that we have, you know, allowed existing structures, what did we just, what did we just do on Zion's Lane, we allowed the expansion of a of a deck that wouldn't be seen, uh, a slight expansion, um, that wasn't encroaching anymore on the um side setback. Jonathan, what are your thoughts on, on expansion west towards the street?
Well, the expansion towards the street is not going to uh, increase the existing uh, nonconformity. Uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be within what is already there, the preexisting condition, so that, that does not trouble me.
Because you're saying the house is already twenty-seven feet from the street or something?
Yes, yes, so he's not increasing
conformity.
The, the nonconformity. Is there anyone here uh speaking against this petition, one, one of the things we want to determine is if the change is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, wouldn't?
Right. Um, I so, so the south side is facing Ray Weiss's property, um, and then uh, east, it, there's a big piece of property that goes, it goes back towards um, Jamison Field. You can't, you can't see it from there.
Yeah.
But again, but, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, that um it, it's a historic home, it's on the national and the state historic register, um, and I cannot change the outside dimensions, it's fairly small, it's twenty-six by twenty-six. And one of the reasons why I want to expand the deck is just to make it more livable, just to make sure that, you know, you can use it two or three seasons, being able to go outside and use that space, that's one of the reasons for making it making it a, a little bit bigger, and again, it's, it's only a foot and a half, I'm not trying to go crazy or anything.
Yeah. Um, well, I, I don't think that this would uh created sort of substantially, you know, substantially harmful or more detrimental effect uh, to the neighborhood, uh, to have a expansion of the deck. Mr. Hammond, any thoughts or concerns? We haven't heard from you.
Uh, I just want to make sure that I understand what was said properly, so the um, the setback to the side of the property is thirty feet in an RA zone, and the dimension to the property line is what, right now? For the south side?
Uh, I think he said, what did you say, Mr. Constantine?
It, it was forty-one feet is what it is now, and then it'll be a foot and a half less.
So still, still within the setback?
Right.
Yeah, okay. No, I don't, I don't make comments.
Um, well, I would uh, move to uh find that this uh, modification does not uh substantially, uh, I, I'm gonna mess up the language right now, because I'm not prepared for tonight. But I would, I would move to approve uh, this and, and give Mr. Constantine a finding that this is uh not constitute a change necessitating a variance, is that correct? Jonathan?
Well, the, the question is uh, um yeah, we, we're, we're approving a finding under section uh, two forty, one point four, point six, uh, permitting this expansion. So yeah, there's, the question of variance is not before us.
Correct.
Not required. So.
Uh, well, I've made a motion, can I have a second to my inartful motion?
Yes.
Clean it up.
I second your motion.
And, and we can clean it up when it comes to uh, the letter that we will send to Mr. Constantine.
Okay.
Uh, great, uh, can I get a vote uh, by roll uh, for a finding to uh approve the modifications as proposed, uh, Mr. Fitch?
I vote aye.
Uh, Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye, um, it passes, uh, we will, Jean will uh, send you a letter um, shortly, Mr. Constantine, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck with your uh, construction.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping Thanksgiving that we'll have everything done, but uh, I don't know, it's, it's, everything just seems to keep slipping, it's a lot of work. I've, I've never built a house before, so it's, it's a lot of work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is a petition.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Yes, who, who's this, sorry?
This is Paul Haverty.
Okay, Paul, thank you.
Bob Marchessin has texted me and indicated he's in the waiting room to get in, so I just wanted to let you know.
Oh, thank you for letting me know, appreciate it.
Welcome.
Uh, this is the hazard of uh, being in charge of the technology, Paul, so we missed, we miss it when Jean goes out and has a night out. So next item on the agenda uh, is the petition of uh Keith Lewis and Alessandra Prizoko and Chris Stokes for a finding uh, to change the roof line of a preexisting nonconforming dwelling at eighty-one Prospect Street, which is in a res big district. I think that they had indicated they wanted to uh, withdraw the petition, is there any, is there a petitioner here uh, for that matter? No, so uh, just for the record, um, I believe that uh, we received word that they wanted to withdraw this evening, and so since there's no one here, um, I will consider that withdrawn, um, and uh, if we wanna repost the hearing, uh, we can do so. Uh, next item on the agenda is a petition for a finding uh, to build an existing, build in addition to an existing uh, preexisting nonconforming dwelling at one fifty-six South Main Street, which is in a residential, a district, uh, is there?
Yeah, I'm here, I can, I can present the case.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share my screen and uh control now. Okay. Just need to find the right. Okay, here it is. Yeah, so that's the application, of course, I haven't signed it, the signed copy is with you, um, right, so this is about this is, this is the property that we're talking about, uh, this is, uh, my name's Bose, uh, my wife Nora is not here at the moment, she's in Germany, so I'm doing it myself. Um, so this is a property on the, at the intersection of Woodland and South Main Street, we have a very wonderful park uh, between South Main Street, the main road, so, so there's a lot of space in front of the house, this is also a historic property, and we're delighted to be, you know, the caretakers of this, of this house, it's, again, again, dates back to um, eighteen eighty-five or eighteen eighty-eight, and that is the old part of the house, that is in the front, it's a beautiful cape. And there were extensions made to this house, maybe over, over the course of the last two hundred and thirty years or so. Um, and the extensions were to add towards the, the back of the house, uh, and I suspect it was done in two stages, the latest was in probably nineteen eighty-nine or so. Anyway, so, so we are, we are a family of three, and the house has gotten a little small as our kid is growing up, and we're moving into, into, you know, well, office spaces and other requirements uh, at, at home, so um, we really think it'll be useful if we could uh, increase the height of this roof, uh, that is the back, the, the, the new additions uh, to the old house. Um, and, and put, and make some livable space there, so, so that is basically the, the uh, the proposal. Uh, so, so the salient features of our remodel as we're preserving the historic part of the house uh, as much as we can, and then the current, current septic system is, is functional, we did a title five uh, on the eighth of August, and it looks in very good shape, so, so we wanna work around the septic system. And there is, the remodel is not gonna include any changes to the footprint of the house, this is a nonconforming house, yes, but the remodel's not gonna change the footprint, and the building up, and, and we're gonna make some building upgrades, like, like bringing uh, the electricity and, and all the other things up to code. And we are also planning to do energy upgrades, so that's essentially what the project is. Now here's the plot plan, and so that's Woodland Street, that's South Main Street, this is the existing house, that's a shed. And the gray area here is the, this is the septic tank, and that is the leach field. And this dotted line here uh, indicates the required setbacks from our neighbors, David, uh, Sally and Brian, and from the street that is sixty, so you can already see that there's a nonconforming house. So the addition is gonna be one floor, erasing the roof, adding a second floor in the new part of the house, this is the old part of the house over here, and adding a garage, which is completely within all the setback limits, um. So that is not part of this finding, the finding is for uh, uh, for us to increase the roof here. So um, I'll show you the uh the other plans. And so essentially, so, so we, we have a fantastic architect, uh, Doug, who's, uh, who's also worked on similar uh, historic properties in Hingham and also in Sherwin, and he's, he's been doing a great job helping us figure out how to how to accomplish the remodel, so um, so this is the new part of the house, looking at it uh, from the back, and uh, the addition would include just this uh, floor on, on the, on the existing structure. So here's the elevation of the uh, of the house from the front, it looks like a beautiful New England cape, um, um, that's the east elevation, that's the south elevation, so that's the old part of the house, that's the dorm of their chimney, and that is a new addition that was done earlier, this is a west elevation, so here's the new part of the house, that's the old part of the house. And this is a north elevation, again, the old part of the house and the new part of the house as it exists today. So after the addition, it's gonna look like this, so um, that's the east elevation, there's really no change to it. The south elevation would have another floor added, and the roof line would match, of the new addition would match the roof line of the existing old house. And that's the west elevation, and this part here is the new part, and that is the north elevation where this part is going to be the addition over here, the new second story, so that's about what I have to present, so uh, I'm open to questions.
Great, thank you, um. Again, to Jonathan's point, uh, the, the measure is whether or not this proposal, um, you know, creates any, any increase uh, in the nonconformity or uh is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So um, Jonathan, uh, any comments or que, and either Jonathan, any comments or questions before we go to the uh, the public for comment?
Sure, well, um the applicant is, is asking whether he can increase the nonconformity to the extent, the height of the roof. And uh, I do not uh personally see how that might be detrimental to the neighborhood, I, I think it's a very nice design and, and uh like with Mr. Constantine, I commend the applicant on preserving an, an historic structure and, and trying to make it conform to uh, modern purposes.
Yeah, that's essentially what we're doing, yeah.
I, I agree with, with those sentiments, I also don't feel that uh, it would be detrimental to the neighborhood, um, so um any members of the public have any comments? Or questions? No? Well, I would move uh, for a finding that the um alteration um, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. Uh, do I have a second for that?
Yes, I, I second uh, that motion for approval of the finding.
Wonderful, uh, vote by roll, Mr. Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Um, Ms. McBride, aye, uh, finding passes, congratulations and good luck with your project, I hope uh your peeling of the onion is good to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much, this is, this is great. Yeah.
Um, great, um, next item on the agenda, um, this is a continuation of a public hearing for the application of Washington Street Sherborne Homes LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to provisions of National law chapter forty B, um. We are nearing the end of our uh, public hearing, I believe, on this matter, there's been um, a lot of um uh, conversation, let's say, and um, you know, sort of feedback from both uh, the Board of Health uh, and the Conservation Commission, uh, which has been submitted to the record. I think it's best to sort of uh, not necessarily um, repeat everything that's been sort of uh, posted um, for the record, which will also, which will obviously be considered, but to focus on, I think, the critical issues um, that, that sort of remain, I think, to sum up, um, my understanding um, the Board of Health would like to see the septic raised an additional foot um, to meet our own local uh, standards in terms of depth, uh, not necessarily uh, depth of the bottom of the leaching field to uh, high watermark. And um, the Conservation uh, Commission would like to see some specific, um, would like to see the ZBA uh, impose some specific conditions around um, the um, the rehabilitation plan in particular, um, and I think the applicant has, you know, a perspective which he can share as well. Um, I would say, you know, historically um, the ZBA, when it comes to uh, conservation, um, I think the perspective I, my understanding is if there's a particular local concern uh, or need, that the ZBA has often imposed, um, you know, certain conditions around um, the rehabilitation and, and, and things of that nature, um, but I think generally, it is not necessary for us uh, to impose conditions on a project uh, related to uh, the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, um, which is the governing uh, regime here, not necessarily the local standard, al- although, you know, local standards can have weight. Um, particularly if they relate to health and safety, nitrogen sensitive areas and things of that nature. As for um you know, the standards, just to remind everyone, the standards by which um, the Housing Appeals Committee reviews, you know, a denial or a condition which can be appealed by the applicant. You know, typically, it is a title five standard that, that they um, defer to, but, but in the appeal process, they do look at the local uh, the local standards and the particular local concerns um, during the review process, although they generally have not been overly favorable to local concerns, so, you know, the ZBA, we balance the, the local concerns, the local regulations with the sort of the title five standard that um, generally, we, generally, that's what is, sort of what is imposed, so um, with that, um, I see Bob, you've joined, uh, sorry that I was delayed and um and admitting you, thank you, Paul, uh, for letting me know, um, so I think with that, uh, uh, Bob, if you just have a few? Um so I think with that, uh uh Bob, if you just have a few comments on sort of where we are and sort of your perspective on both raising of the septic, um the mitigation plan, and then we'll hear from uh, you know, uh the Board of Health representatives and then the public and Conservation and the public, um and I think we'll 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 wrap this up if if possible, so. The floor is yours after I've now talked for way too long.
Uh, thank you. So I I'm gonna uh I'm gonna follow uh Jonathan's uh advice from the last meeting, which is, uh Bob, put it in writing and uh send it on to us. And I've I've done that and perhaps in a bit more length of a back and forth between myself and and Michael uh for the Conservation Commission and and Daryl and Julie for the Board of Health. Um but I did put a lot of my my thoughts um and and my concerns about their requirements in writing, so I'm gonna be really brief tonight. I think we're uh you know, we've we've banged through a lot of issues over the course of the last few months, and I think we're mostly in agreement, as far as I can tell. Um yeah, with the exception of of two issues which were kind of left for tonight. Uh I'll address the the Conservation Commission first, and I don't think we're terribly far apart. Um the Conservation Commission is asking you, the ZBA, to uh impose a mitigation plan uh based on the local uh wetlands requirements and on their um, you know, significantly increased uh desire for mitigation over uh over the uh what would be required under the Wetlands Protection Act in the state. Um and um I'm not averse to a mitigation plan. Uh I'm absolutely okay uh with a mitigation plan. Um what I told you in my email uh was that I felt like uh the mitigation plan proposed by the commission of approximately uh two hundred uh plants, I thought was excessive for a a couple of uh or or for four uh small homes, four small duplex or two duplexes of four homes. And I I pointed you uh this board uh to the decision they'd made on the um on the um Coolidge Crossing project where they deferred uh making any uh mitigation requirements or other conditions based on the local uh Conservation Commission regulations and allowed the Conservation Commission, it's bite at the apple, so to speak, uh under the Wetlands Protection Act, which now because of court rulings comes after our our time with you and prior to, uh excuse me, after the issuance of the comprehensive permit. So they asked for two hundred plants uh on Coolidge Crossing, you deferred and let them regulate under the WPA. That's what I'm asking you to do here. Um that said, I as I I I'm not averse to some mitigation planting. Um but I made the point in my email that the um uh that the um Coolidge Crossing for the Toll Brothers folks who are coming in to build uh a hundred and I think thirty-seven units in three, you know, huge apartment buildings. Um they, their consultant uh proposed in the first meeting with the Concom a couple of weeks ago now to plant a hundred and sixty-eight plants for that scale of project. So you can see why I would feel like the two hundred plants um is a little bit of an over, I I use the word overreach. Um but you know, again, you know, Michael should know that I am not averse to a mitigation plan. Scale back what has been asked for.
I I appreciate that. I think I would say that uh just to to channel my inner Michael, uh uh I would say that it's not the that that the size of the number of units, it's obviously the disturbance uh on the land and the unique features uh of the land that dictate uh the mitigation plan. And so um I'm sure he'll, I'll give him an opportunity to correct my poor impression of his, what he would say, but uh I think that's sort of what he would say there. And I think uh you know, there are some unique features on this lot, right? There's a, there's a uh vernal pool, I think, which which uh whether it's recog- I saw there was some back and forth about whether it was officially recognized or not. Uh to me, that's a that's a particular area uh of importance and sensitivity that that this board might consider, you know, imposing some mitigation around um depending on sort of what the project looks like. And I can pull up the plot plan in a second, we could just maybe go through that, but I want to give Michael an opportunity to.
Yeah, I mean, uh Zach, on on the point of the vernal pool, uh the vernal pool is certified and it was certified before I bought the property and it's certified and, you know, it's all in the in the public record. Um and um so therefore it is very much under the purview of the Wetlands Protection Act and and Michael and the commission will have the opportunity uh to impose some mitigation. I believe we're we're in the uh kind of eighty to a hundred foot, or maybe it's even eighty-five to a hundred foot uh buffer zone of the vernal pool, and we're very willing to to do mitigation in that space. We we don't oppose that. Now, do you wanna go ahead with Michael and get through this, just for process, and then we go to the Board of Health?
Yeah, let's 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 do that. And then uh I'll pull up the uh, I'll try to pull up the plan in a second, so if we need to. Uh Michael, do you wanna comment? Oh, you're on mute.
Okay, uh thank you for a start on what I might say. There's I guess this continual comparison to Coolidge Crossing is, I don't think so appropriate. Um it's it's a different project that's, as you said, and it's had other mitigation and issues, and we haven't even resolved that project. Yes.
Other particular concerns of this of this property, I think that would be helpful. And I guess if you could highlight where you feel the state reg wouldn't adequately address mitigation in any particular area. And if you want me to pull up uh the site plan, I can I can do that if you give me a second.
As as is in the email that I last sent yesterday. Um this, the vernal pool is not necessarily protected at the state level. Um it's not, it's a as was written there, it has to be part of some other kind of resource at the state level. So therefore, whereas it's protected under the Sherburne bylaw, it's not necessarily protected under the state. So that I don't wanna have to keep repeating that, but um so um so therefore mitigation, I mean, we're just talking, there's not even mitigation going on here. This is just partial restoration. I wanna say, just to get the terminology straight for everybody, is that mitigation is when you're balancing some impacts you have. Here, there's a lot of impacts because it's unaltered buffer zone to be began with. And so we're just getting some restoration of part of what of the buffer zone that they're uh disturbing. Some of the buffer zone is much of the buffer zone, not much. A significant amount is still gonna be permanently uh altered. Um so we're just looking for restoration of part of the buffer zone that's gonna be altered. Um that's just an overall feel. And that's why, um and that, so therefore I feel like in this case here that we wanna, in the proximity to the wetlands, I think it makes. Okay, so you're bringing it up there. Um so the area around the vernal pool or what we would call an isolated, um I mean, we could bring up the, I could show you the one that we suggested where the planting areas are uh for our suggested conditioning. Would you like?
Yeah, Michael, why don't you, why don't you bring that up?
Okay. Is this visible to folks?
Yes.
Right, so here's the uh the one area, the isolated vegetated wetland that is more clearly protected underneath the bylaw. And this is the amount of of uh of restoration area that we're looking for, which is getting uh in this case here, because Bob nicely kept out over here, kept out of it here. Um and even though the septic system is graded into here, um which obviously is a disturbance uh from what is naturally there. And even if even if the septic system is raised and there's a bit more grading, um we basically are just trying to do our best to get it restored with shrubs and a ground cover, a basius layer there. On the other side, uh this is a small area here where we'd suggest, just in the continuity of uh protecting wetlands that, but it's not in our jurisdiction that you might also ask them to do some replanting there. Then there's this other planting area too here, which is a maybe half. You could see a line since this figure is a you could see my cursor moving here. This is the buffer zone line there. And so there's some fraction of that in pink that we're looking to get uh restored with the planting plan. Um the uh which, given the proximity to a significant wetland. And I think as I've made the argument in emails, I don't wanna go too far as that repeated, is that we feel that it is something that the ZBA can do under local health protection issues, that groundwater protection is a major part of protecting our ground, presenting our drinking water.
And just to sum up, um you're asking the ZBA to impose conditions um in the fifty to one hundred foot zone, which our regulations have jurisdiction over, but generally the Wetlands Protections Act does not require restoration.
Does have, it does have protection there. It's not, it's not outside of of that in the in the pink area in particular.
So I guess.
The blue, the blue area definitely would not have protection at the next stage. The uh or a very slight chance, but unlikely. The pink area is basically a uh, an area that has some protection, but we protect it more under the under the bylaw. And so therefore, um we're suggesting that as a package deal, we can do the whole thing there. Um and the density of the plantings is what's been used elsewhere. Uh we don't have the exact areas, as we wrote in our last email. If Bob wants to map out the exact areas and use a formula um to uh in terms of the density of shrubs and um that, or come up with a I mean, we asked, we brought up that issue a month or so ago, about the issue of not knowing the areas of of uh of what was gonna be disturbed and what would be, could possibly be restored. Um so uh maybe I'll just stop there.
Let me just a quick question, I guess. Michael, um just for, I haven't looked at, I haven't, you know, delved into the regs in a while. So what's what's the, would you describe as the the gap between the state um requirement of restoration in the fifty to one hundred versus our local regulations?
Um I'd say that the state has not often, if if we could push for this same thing at the uh at the uh in terms of the planting area too, at the NOI level in front of us. If we had some, we would probably have less fallback if we didn't reach some agreement. And the state, and it was appealed to the state if we said, no, we don't wanna we don't wanna uh give you a a permit unless you meet these kind of plantings, restoration planting. And uh and then it was appealed to the state. We've seen it, we we avoid that for everybody's benefit, but in the past, sometimes you don't get that kind of backup in terms of their feeling of the importance of this in an area um where we do have groundwater for our drinking water. Um and so therefore we have less behind us um there. It's so it's, it's not an absolute issue. Um but it seems easier to maybe convince you at this point, at this level here um that we'd like to uh get this conditioning here to the extent that we can.
Uh yes, Bob.
Zach, if I can jump in, maybe I can move this along uh by by offer of a compromise uh tonight. Um so I'm comfortable with the uh, and I I think it's only a couple thousand square feet uh that that Michael is showing in the blue, which is in the buffer zone, the very outer buffer zone of the vernal pool. I'm I'm comfortable with accepting their mitigation plan in that area, okay? I'm also comfortable in accepting about half of their mitigation in the pink. And the rea- my thinking here is I want these families to have a full backyard, okay? And what they're asking for in the outer buffer zone is to plant plants, which would be disruptive to having a yard for kids to kick a soccer ball around in. And so I'm I'm sensitive to those areas kind of behind the two homes. Um I'm comfortable with their ask of the planting um kind of downhill of the septic area and and all of that area. And so what I would propose as a compromise tonight to move this along is that we do, you know, the blue and then kind of the the half of the pink uh to the down left of the plan. And let let me build uh, you know, full backyards uh for these families. That would be my my kind of compromise proposal tonight.
Appreciate that, Bob. Thank you um for that. Uh insight into your perspective and Michael, thank you um for all the feedback you provided this week. It's very helpful. Um and uh for your comments tonight. So if there's, if there's nothing else, Michael, we're gonna, we'll move on, but I'll give you the the opportunity. And then I guess uh any any questions from the public uh on this issue of um restoration?
Do you want the public first or before I come back?
Uh well, it's up to you. If you have something to say, I don't, I don't see anyone's hands raised uh at the moment, but I am in, I'm in the technological driver's seat to that, so.
I see this. Why don't you let Tom go and I'll still go after that then?
Uh thank you. Just just a quick question. I haven't heard the uh trail easement mentioned in the last uh couple hearings, uh and I believe that tr- trail easement is uh held by the the town and the Conservation Commission. Will will that be conditioned in the uh project uh pending approval? That the uh the trail be uh uh moved as as shown in the these plans and respected in the future?
Would you like me to answer that, Zach, or?
Um sure, Bob, if you.
Yeah, um so as you, I think, are aware, Tom, uh that easement, um it was asked of us by the uh by the Board of Health that the trail not cross over uh the corner of the uh septic field, which you can see is where it is now. And we've shown a design of the trail, which instead runs uh right alongside that property line to the left and then cuts back over to the existing trail. There's been some discussion about whether we could cut it back over a little bit sooner. Um and we'd be open to that. Um just to remind you um of the of the legal aspects of this, and I don't think we need to really get into the legal aspects because it's this, I don't think this is controversial. We're just moving the trail in a way that still has all the same kind of benefits that it has today. We're just, in fact, we're rerouting it, so there's not this kind of up a, up a slope on the edge of the, up and over the the corner of the septic field. So it'd be more pleasant where we're proposing it. Uh the law does allow us, uh unless we're doing something crazy with it and really killing the utility of the trail. Uh the case law in Massachusetts does allow us uh to reset uh the trail. And uh that's what we're proposing doing. We don't need an approval uh to do that. Uh we're allowed to do that. Um and like I said, I don't think it's terribly controversial, what we're doing here anyway. So I don't think we really need to spend a lot of time on the law uh so much as just, you know, that everybody's comfortable with what we're doing.
Thank you. No, I I think it's a great improvement. I ju- I just wanna make sure it's part of the project and.
Well, it's in the plan, so therefore it's something that we would be required to build. It's part of the plan and it's part of the Board of Health approval. I mean, it's in that area actually is uh not very heavily wooded. Uh and so it's my anticipation that it would not require cutting any trees and, you know, obviously, nobody wants to cut any trees, so.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
I guess following up on just the trail thing that uh, yeah, as we wrote in our limo that would be, and as Bob referenced. It would be, we were just trying to understand whether we could basically pull the trail closer, further away and put it more in this area here, with that to the extent that what's an an easy place to make a trail. I'm not quite sure why the plan has it here, but uh maybe there's some reason as opposed to just doing.
Uh no, I I and Michael, I'm perfectly willing to put it and pull it up a little bit as you're suggesting. Um we just need to find a spot where we're not gonna hit any trees, right? Nobody wants.
Oh, I mean, uh it could be conditioned simply to do a trail that comes, that minimizes. Oh, I mean, uh, it could be conditioned simply to do a trail that comes, that minimizes tree cutting and, uh, maybe in concert with the commission or something like that.
Yeah.
Um, so that could be done there. Uh, coming, uh. And I don't know if there's any other public, but coming back to, uh, the general planting, restoration planting. I appreciate Bob's offer and certainly heartily accept the, uh. Doing the mitigation in the, uh, Vernal Pool area. Um, so that certainly eliminates a major concern. Um, and I assume when you talk about half, you're talking about somehow keeping this pink area as planting, but you don't want to plant. Um, in this area here.
That's my.
I mean, just so you know, for the ZBA and for Bob, we picked this line here because then it's graded down. So, um, so that it's a, it's a, it's a change in the, in the backyards. Um, it's not where you want to kick your soccer ball necessarily down the hill. Um, so that's why we selected. Um, that line there, even though, I mean, we recognize that there's always a problem with having a yard, but. I would say that there's still areas here that we would like to see, uh, planted. Um, but, um, but I leave that to the ZBA, whether you'd want to give some of this area there. Um, and, uh, we can go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that, um, information. Jonathan, Jonathan, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Should I stop sharing?
Uh, let's just hold it. Any members of the public have any other questions on, on this topic? I don't think I see anyone. So, Michael, thank you. Hi, Brian. How are you? It's not Brian, but it looks like.
Hi, sorry.
I'm here too.
Yeah, it's Mary Moore, forty nine Farm Road. Um, I just had a question. I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but I'm. I'm wondering about the waiver request for the, um. For the EHIR. It's something that we care about, um, you know, deeply in our neck of the woods. And it seems like, you know, this is being considered as a, I guess, a two multifamily unit forty B, but it's. Really connected on the parcel to the larger project and the permitting that went on on Greenwood. So I'm just curious if the ZBA is. Going to be considering the full threshold when they think about, you know, either granting that waiver or putting a condition in for the EHRR, which I think would be a prudent one for the butters.
Yeah, I don't know that that, uh, I, I get to your points. Um. I don't necessarily look at these as conjoined projects. I know they started off that way, uh, and that was our original denial. Uh, maybe reference to Greenwood, reference that, um, but I think given. Given the subdivisions that have happened on Greenwood and what's being proposed here, I, I personally don't look at these as sort of, uh, combined projects. And I also don't. I, I'm not, I'm not convinced, um, that that is an enforceable requirement for us to impose, um, on this project. Although, you know, happy to, uh, you know, consult with town council again, um, as, you know, we're deliberating this and I appreciate, you know, the call out. Um, that's sort of my perspective at the moment, but I, you know, always open to be convinced.
I appreciate, I appreciate the consideration. Yep.
And, uh, I just want to make sure that the other board members have an opportunity to respond, um, to this more before, uh, we just, we go back to you, Bob, if you don't mind. Jonathan, uh, or any Jonathan?
Sure, Zach. I agree with what you just said. I don't see that these, these projects are conjoined, so to speak. And, uh, but I'm not, um, opposed to getting advice from town council on that point.
Great. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, all I would say is that, um, the Board of Health last November, um, after, you know, my asking them to. Uh, go to town council and provide a really good definition, uh, for what requires an EHIR and what doesn't. What I can tell you is that this project, these, these homes relative to the other two lots that I think Mary is alluding to. Um, next door on Lot One and Lot Two on Washington and then also the, the four lots on Greenwood. Um, under the Board of Health's interpretation of their EHIR regulation. These homes would not be connected and added up to trigger an EHIR. And the reason is they don't share any, and, and this is their definition, not my own. This is very clear from them. Um, that these, these, uh, four homes do not share any infrastructure. With any of the other A and R lots. And, you know, I was very grateful back in November when they, uh, explained that and carefully went through their requirements. So one of the things, for example, that they would do on Lot One and Two, they would add them up. Um, because they, th- those two lots happen to share a common driveway and that for the Board of Health. Uh, I don't necessarily agree with it, but for the Board of Health, that is sharing a common infrastructure. Uh, but for those two, you roll them up and they, they didn't hit the, uh, the trigger level of the EHIR. Here, these four homes also don't hit the trigger level for the EHIR. And they don't share the infrastructure with any of the other proposed and now permitted projects on the rest of the land. So I guess I'm, I'm spending this time more to educate the public on this topic. Um, because it's, it's definitely, under the Board of Health's interpretation, does not trigger the requirement for an EHIR.
Thank you, Bob. Um, Mary, do you have your hand still raised or?
Yeah, thank you, Zach. I just would respectfully ask that the ZBA refer to their own legal, um, team, you know, as opposed to interpreting what Bob has just told us. Because I think that there is a connection that happens that may not be an explicit roadway or utility connection. But the hydrology of the area certainly is connected. And I think that the burden is on the applicant to show that there will be no negative environmental impact from these, this large phased project that's being proposed. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. So I think moving on topics, unless there's any other comments on conservation, I just want to clarify that. Um, I think we're going to move to the Board of Health, uh, comments in the septic design next, unless there's any objections to that, which I don't see any hands raised or objections at the moment. So. Um, I guess, uh, Bob, um, you want to talk about, uh, your perspective on, uh, the Board of Health's, um. Request, uh, to raise the septic another foot. Uh, just for background, you do have a Title Five permanent hand. Um, the board would prefer if you, um, built the system closer to, um, local standards. Um, and, um, that is what we are sort of batting around right now, I think.
Sure.
Um. So, uh, your perspective on why you, you know, would, wh- you know, why you disagree or agree with their recommendation to go, you know, above and beyond, uh, Title Five and adhere to our local standards? I would like to hear your perspective on that.
Sure. Yeah. So I just want to, you know, I know that, uh, I think the ZBA already understands this, but just for the gathered public. Um, there are kind of two important rules here and they both have, happen to be associated with five feet, the number five feet. Uh, the first rule is a rule that you have to have naturally occurring, um, uh, pervious material. Um, naturally occurring five feet of pervious material to the estimated high groundwater. We do not have that in this situation. So under the local Sherbin regulations, if they were enforced by this board, you would deny the project, uh, on that basis. Uh, we're asking for a waiver from that naturally occurring five feet of, uh, of, uh, spread. Um, I am assuming, given our conversation, that the board is likely, uh, to, this board is likely to provide that waiver. Uh, so that we can in fact build the project because that's a go-no-go decision on the part of the ZBA here. Um, and we're asking and, you know, frankly, expect to get that waiver from you. The second issue, and that's the issue that's, um, more in play.
Just to clarify, the reason why you do expect that waiver is because historically the, the law has favored Title Five and not the local standards and therefore the local standard should be waived.
Yeah, yes, that is. And, and because we've had lots of discussions, including with the Board of Health on the topic. Um, it, it is, I respect your ability to make that call, but it seems like that's where we're headed. Um, so that, we'll put that aside. So if you give us that waiver. Then, um, the second waiver that we're asking for is that we, uh, now we're allowed to build a mounded system. Okay. And under the local regulation, uh, for new construction. You would be required to put, to have five feet of separation in the mounding, so to speak. Um, and that is what is required in Sherbin for new construction. Um, my argument to you that I, I tried to make as clear as I could in writing, uh, based on Jonathan's, uh, uh, suggestion. Was that, uh, the local regula- the Board of Health on that local regulation routinely provides. Uh, a waiver to it for homeowners. And I've heard it said, well, if, if we didn't provide a waiver to that for homeowners. It would be a manifest, manifest injustice, just totally not fair. And I would argue that in fact, though that waiver is provided so that a homeowner can go to, uh. Four feet, a mounded system of four feet to groundwater instead of a mounded, uh, five-foot system to groundwater. It's provided not because it's a manifest injustice. All it would take for all of the homeowners that are given that variance to be compliant with this rule. Would be to add an extra foot of fill. And it spreads it out more, the, the system more and the grading areas more. So typically you have to cut more trees. Um, and, and you have a larger expense in a more mounded system. So what it comes down to is. That variance is routinely provided, and I gave you an example of this, uh, in the first quarter of this year, and there are many, many, many examples. Where the board allowed an increase in the bedroom count from three to four. A thirty-three percent theoretical increase in the size of the, the home and the, and the occupants of the home. And they allowed the variance it so that the, the homeowner could avoid the additional expense of the foot of fill. To avoid the aesthetics of a, a higher mounded system and to avoid the aesthetics of cutting down more trees and, uh, kind of delving further into the buffer zone. And so the board routinely allows all of us who live here and have a system, when we repair it. They allow us to avoid that cutting of trees. They, and, and i- in my mind. If that was a critical, uh, component of public health and safety of the septic system. The board should never allow us as homeowners to have that variance. Because all we're avoiding is spending a little bit more money and cutting down, uh, some trees and, um, some, uh, you know, an aesthetically less attractive system. And yet the board routinely allows that variance, uh, to, to be given. And I don't understand why it, it, why that would be a manifest injustice to not give them the variance. It's, it's not a manifest injustice to cause someone to spend a bit more money and cut down a few more trees. If it was critical for the public health. And so my argument is what's good enough for all of us. Is good enough for a very small scale affordable housing development. And when I say affordable housing, it's obviously a. A three hundred and thirty thousand dollar unit, but it's also the other three homes are much more achievable for folks to come to Sherbin and live in our town. Than, um, than the typical home in Sherbin. And so I don't think it's fair. For all of us to get that variance and for the ZBA to not provide that variance to this project. Um, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. So thank you.
Thanks, Bob, for your perspective. I just want to clarify a few things. I'm Daryl, I want to go to, go to you for comment. Um. So you do a Title Five, uh, permanent hand, correct?
Yes.
And that, uh, can you just tell me what that permit, um, allows for with respect to both depth to groundwater as well as the distance? Uh, you know, the, the, the amount of fill. Can you just run, run us through the parameters? I can pull the plan out, but if you could just.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I may be off by a, a few inches here and there, but, because I don't, I'm not looking at it, but the concepts are what's important here, I think. So the depth to groundwater, I want to say, was somewhere between thirty-two and thirty-six inches, uh, uh, in the area of this system. So we don't meet the sixty inches that are required, that's the go-no-go, right? I, I E, we, we have to mound to get the separation. And so we require that variance because we don't have the naturally occurring five feet to groundwater. And in fact, we don't even have naturally occurring four feet of groundwater, but, um, you know, the, the, uh. Uh, Title Five does not require that naturally occurring. They require that you can fill and have four feet of separation. And that is what we designed. Um. So the, the system is raised, but it's raised to, uh, four feet above the groundwater. Much the same way the system was designed and built that I showed you. I think it was on Russet Hill Road. I can't remember. Um, you know, it's the, the same concept. Um, and we are looking for that, for that variance. I, I've, I've, I've. Gone a little bit off, uh, Zach, of your question, I think. Could you?
Yeah, I just want to sort of talk about this for a second. So this is the profile of the plan right here, right? This, this is what I see was submitted. I assume this is what was approved.
Yes, that's right.
So, um, you know, I don't know if we can see here, we see, uh, depth to groundwater here or, you know, or any of the, the four feet we're talking about versus.
Yeah, so the estimated high groundwater, if you move the cursor, whoever controls the cursor to the right. To the right, to the right, uh, down, right there. No, yeah, right there. That's where the, uh, ESHGT is estimated seasonal high groundwater. And, and by the way, that's the highest finding, right? We found. There were multiple levels where the groundwater was. We are forced to obviously choose the, the, the closest to the surface of all of the testing that we did.
Yep.
And that's at an elevation of two oh six point two, as you can see. And then we're required to have the bottom of our system be four feet. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And so Daryl's asking you to add another foot here, is right? Is that, is that what we're talking about?
That is, uh, that is correct. To bring the whole system.
You want us to bring this whole system up?
Which unfortunately what that does, if you were, you know, building a big retaining wall around this, which is unattractive, expensive. And not something you would want to do here. It's, it, um, when you bring that system up. You end up forcing the grading coming off the system to be much broader.
Yeah.
And so in this case, it will go deeper into the buffer zone. I don't know because we haven't designed it. But it could be that we end up even inside the fifty-foot line. In fact, we almost.
Talking about, you're talking about the grading here.
Uh, well, it's more on the other side that I'm talking about. Yes. We, I, my guess is we would be forced into the, inside the fifty-foot setback. Um, and we certainly would cut down more trees and it would be an, an uglier, you know, less aesthetically pleasing system for people to look at.
And, and just to go back here, so, so on this profile here, so, so you're being asked to add more. Uh, non-natural sewer gravel to raise this, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
I just want to make it clear what, what, try to create visuals for folks to understand what we're talking about. So Daryl, um, I don't see your hand because I, my. Display is all messed up, but I, I assume you want to jump in. So, um, if you want to do that, go ahead.
Uh, yes. So. Complicated topic on giving variances. And you would have to sit through a lot of our meetings to see. How we typically try to balance what's going on with a. System that's being replaced, right? So there's, uh, only variances on replacement systems. And those older systems, or if it's a failed system, either one typically are not. typically are not up to the same standards that we expect for today. And so having the system replaced is viewed as a very positive step towards improved public health protection. And we look at a wide variety of things that we're considering. One thing is that a lot of folks who are replacing their systems will use IA technology, innovative alternative technology, which, under the rules from MassDP, for a lot of those, for nitrogen reduction, it's built into the approvals of those kinds of systems that they can be, have less of a mound, if a mound is needed at all. We also look at things, although the poo-pooing of taking down trees is mentioned, that can be important for us. We're looking at the entirety of what the property had before, what it's moving towards, and what different factors have gone on and concessions have gone on there. And when we're looking at replacements, we have considered trees and keeping trees to be important for both carbon capture and also for their ability to pull out some of the excess nutrients from the groundwater that is being added by the septic system. So we are making those trade-offs. Every situation is a little bit different. And compare it to this. In terms of if there's any tree removal needed here, I suggest talk to Conservation Commission about how they view the trade-offs. But our goal with requesting the mound was more to hold to as close as possible the requirements that we have, because we do believe they have value and we do believe that's backed up by science. So forgive me, I did not send something earlier. I had collected quite a bit of information from things I have read over decades, both for my professional work and for this volunteer work. All of that was getting very complicated. It is not an easy topic in the least to try to simplify, but here are my simplifications for now.
Appreciate all the feedback.
And one other thing for the, that's a little bit different with this request for this system, is it's a twelve-bedroom system. That is large. There is still an issue about density of discharge of a larger volume of septic in one area. Because you are not getting, we don't want to rely on dilution, but that is hardcoded into some of the design factors in Title V and our regulations. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Daryl.
Yeah, there...
That's the board, I'm going to ask my board if there's any questions before you continue.
The variance side, but otherwise I could address why we would want that extra foot.
Yeah, we'll get to that. I just want to see if there's any questions from the board members that are here before you get to that topic, no?
Well, what is the public health or safety reason you need another foot?
Okay, so, more soil, more filtering is the general rule of thumb. And that, there are a variety of states around the country who do evaluations of septic more than others, Minnesota, New Jersey, Massachusetts. It's hard to get long-term studies of septic systems, because who's really going to underwrite that? It's unlike contaminated sites like Super Sun sites that get intensely studied for what the dynamics are of contaminants going into the ground and what happens to them. Our knowledge of septic systems is far less. The amount of time and effort put into that is much less. However, Oregon has done a very good job of addressing it and trying to evaluate specifically septic systems in more rural areas and the impact on groundwater quality. My simplest thing is they'll say they look at nitrates because nitrates are common contaminant, ubiquitous, common contaminant really to be found in septic discharges. For other chemicals, pharmaceuticals, household products, whatever else, very hard to evaluate, but that one's a given. You see nitrates in the groundwater, usually from a human source, because otherwise nitrogen is bound up in either the upper soil levels and then in vegetation, because vegetation needs nitrogen to grow. So it's usually contained above the surface. So when you see it in groundwater, it's an indicator. They were doing studies and finding nitrogen throughout the state, different levels could be related to agriculture. So they did studies in agricultural areas and studies in just rural areas with septic systems. So it's one, clear it would reach the groundwater and get in people's drinking water. The soils there are much deeper than what we have here. Groundwater is deeper than what we have here, or sometimes a little similar, but they might have a few hundred feet of soil. And fifty feet between the surface and where the water is being drawn from for drinking water. One thing that they have seen clearly in their studies is that when you have sandier, more gravelly soils, which is akin to that required sewer gravel by Title V, that the nitrates move faster to the groundwater. They find higher concentrations of nitrates consistently in areas with sandier soils. Perhaps the more clay soils and silty soils that are more tightly packed might just slow it down. They're not exactly sure on that yet, whether it's a slowing down of how long it takes the nitrates to move into the water or not. But that correlation is clear. And there are other studies that talk about how. And if you think about sand versus other soils you find in your yard, it's smoother stone, right? It's not something that is going to react the same with the kinds of things that might be in the septic effluent. Not going to bind with them, it may not lead to chemical reactions with those materials that could either make them worse or make them cleaner. And not as sticky in a sense. Like the stuff doesn't get held up on it as much. You picture dirt or potting soil versus sand, okay? So that's the general concept.
Quick question.
That's what we're applying to this Title V sewer gravel, is that it's just going to let the stuff pass right on through without doing much treatment. So if we could improve that by twenty-five percent, that's a step in the right direction. And that's a call for you to make.
Okay, thank you.
That is the Board of Health's recommendation and preference.
Thank you, Daryl, I appreciate that. And just, I see the soil test data here. It looks like mostly with sandy loam. How do you, just, you know, on a scale of, you know, super pervious gravel versus something that has clay that's slower, where do you put sandy loam in that gradient?
Sandy loam is faster. It's closer to the sewer gravel and farther, you know. It's in between clay and the sewer gravel.
Would you say, is there a weighting of, you know, where they are? Is that, you know, right in the middle, or would you say...
Well, Zach, there's a Class 1 and a Class 2, Class 1 being faster and Class 2 being slower. And sandy loam is definitely Class 2. You can also look at the perk rates that are shown on the plan. This is kind of a medium, it's not a fast sandy situation at all.
And would sewer gravel be considered a Class 1?
I would think so, but I'll let Daryl answer that question. I would think so.
Sewer gravel, the reason that it's required by MassDP for mounds is because they want to make sure that the effluent goes down and doesn't break out the side of the mound, right? If you had clay in there, it would go down and it would then find, you know, a way out and it would weep out the side. And the last thing they want is for people to be potentially exposed to septic effluent that hasn't really been treated yet on the surface. And so the function of it is to drive it down more than, you know, so it isn't going out, it is not so much treatment, it's about keeping it away from human contact.
Thank you.
Hence, it's not, it's the antithesis of what you want in a way, be happening.
Thank you, Daryl. Jonathan, Jonathan, any questions on Daryl's comments or the the feedback? I know your inboxes were inundated with this week.
I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Nor do I.
Well, it's not an easy, it's a tough decision you need to make.
Well, yeah, it's going to be, the deliberations are always fun and writing the decision is even more so, let me tell you. So I think at this, I think we're going to close the public, I think we're ready to close the public hearing at this point unless there's any sort of burning questions or comments. I do see Michael's hand is raised. So we'll go to Michael and any other comments or questions. And then I think we're going to move to close the hearing and move to deliberations on this particular petition. Michael and then Mary.
And then there's also Tom.
And then Tom.
Yeah. Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street, just speaking as a resident, that I can see the trade-offs of of issues there that, I guess, geez, I almost forgot what I was going to say about that maybe this is a compromise in the middle in terms of between where they are now and what the Board of Health is asking for. I just, I'll bring that up in the middle since I guess more is better, so maybe something is better than nothing. Some addition. I guess I'll put, right, I mean, I have the problem with the fact that this, the gravel stuff, it increases the flow from a wetlands perspective. And we'd like to keep the water away since it's near a lot of wetlands and we'd like to get more filtration of the septic effluent before it gets to groundwater. And we'd like to avoid it mixing in with the high levels. So maybe a little bit more is better than nothing. On this, so now stop it from there, even though, right, what the tree cutting implications are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Mary.
Exactly, just, I know, I appreciate you following up with counsel. Hopefully, you know, I don't know if that's before your deliberations or how that works, but I do hope that you consider Chapter 21G and case law that shows water as a shared resource. And of course, in Sherburne, we don't have lines of pipes carrying water between houses, but we do have lots of fractures in our bedrock and wetlands that we rely on to make sure that it stays clean. So I do appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom.
Thank you, just a couple of comments. And, you know, Bob, of course, makes a good point about, you know, variances on our existing homes. But I'd like to point out, this is variance on four, essentially four septic systems, four homes. So I think it bears a lot of extra weight in terms of what the Board of Health is trying to bring up. And the other thing I would mention, and it was in the Groundwater Protection Committee comments to your board a couple of months ago. The other situation we have in Sherburne is septic density. Wherever we're finding, you know, septic systems clustered closely, say on an acre or less in our town, we're seeing higher levels of pollutants. And we're just now starting to measure them. We weren't measuring them. Ten, twenty, thirty, forty years ago when Title V was updated. So I think these issues are a bigger concern of those that follow the groundwater and health issues. And I think we need to be very careful about increasing septic density in this town and ever-relaxing our Board of Health regulations and/or the state-level Title V regulations. Because I'll tell you, as an analytical chemist that studies fate and transport of chemicals in the environment, we are way, way behind the science in today's regulations. But I know that's not, that's not essentially your problem, but it's all ended up on your lap. So thank you for listening to me.
No, thank you for that comment. I think you hit the nail on the head, which is that, unfortunately, the regulations are behind where we need to be from an environmental standpoint, but the law is also behind where we need to be. And so, you know, our ability to, you know, create, let's say, you know, a unique perspective and requirements beyond Title V, right? As you know, is very limited here, so we just, that's... Our hands are somewhat tied and our discretion. So, but I appreciate that perspective and I agree with you that the regulations and the science are behind. And we have a lot of catching up to do to make sure that we preserve, you know, the town as it is for generations. So, Michael.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest, then maybe also Conservation Commission. But to sort of to Tom's point and something that will probably come up, I guess, an advance notice on the Notice of Intent Hearing. It's something that we've done in other projects where we might have the opportunity here to just ask for some condition about just on our own. The town could do some baseline testing to see what's in the wetlands there in terms of water quality and then try to get the ability to test that in four or five years or so from now and catch things that might be persistent, that pertain mainly to septic systems. There's certain compounds that are tracers for that so that we can maybe collect a little more sciences. Daryl, it is, it's an understudied area that I still find kind of amazing, even though it's very site-specific as to the soil types and whatever. But we're going to try to do that at another site in town where we have that ability and we'll try to do a little bit more of that to see if we can further our knowledge about these issues.
Makes good sense, thank you. Daryl?
I'd just like to give another perspective on what Title V means. So it's a, the state has to set a minimum standard that is going to apply appropriately throughout the state. That means that the Title V regulations are meant to be not be overstepping for, say, a municipality that has municipal water supply and a sewer system for most of the town. And yet there are a few houses on the outskirts of the town or in less densely populated areas where it wasn't worth running a sewer line and they might have septic systems. And so even under those circumstances where there's no threat of the septic systems impacting directly a drinking water supply, they are requiring four feet. And I don't think that is the situation at all for Sherburne. So that is part of Sherburne's interest in having greater protections. It's, the responsibility was passed on to municipalities to enhance regulations related to septic systems to address local circumstances. And so that is, to me, that's a big issue. The four feet is a bare minimum.
Okay, thanks.
Zach?
Yes, Bob?
May I have a brief word? We've wandered in the last...
A brief word, but I am itching to move to close.
I hear you, I hear you. I just, I feel like we've wandered into more of a public policy conversation in the last fifteen minutes rather than specifically talking about this project, which is okay with me, because I love to talk about public policy. And there are lots of folks here and they tend to be drawn into this type of situation and this type of debate. But I just want to remind us all at the end of this that, you know, you've talked about Zach and the board, you talk about the trade-offs that this board is charged with, right? You're trading off the need... You're you're trading off the need for affordable housing. That's your charge with uh the need to protect the water supply and and protect the environment and all of these other issues. And I am extremely respectful and a lot of people don't believe that, but I am very, very respectful uh of the wetlands and the I design around that as absolutely best I can. Um, and same thing with the septic, I'm very, very cognizant of these issues and the challenges that we have in Sherburne without having uh uh municipal water and sewer. But I just want to say that we never in these hearings talk about the public health implications of a lack of affordable housing. And that's not, you know, some progressive craziness, that is real. And I know four houses not really gonna make a difference, but they add up. And I just think at the same time that we work to protect the public health by protecting the water supply and, you know, uh not cutting down trees and and staying out of the buffer zones, we also need to be cognizant of the value of providing affordable housing to people. It really makes a difference in their lives and we don't feel that in our community. Um, but I think a lot about that and about the tension that you're charged with. And anyway, thank you for that, for that sixty.
I appreciate that, and I and I think just to remind folks, you know, we are supposed to really uh, the Z B A unfortunately, with the state of the law, is supposed to find a way, right? Conditions and waivers are supposed to enable the project to go forward uh within reasonable bounds. And so um, that's 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 obviously a very colloquial way of describing it, but that's that's basically the way that that we have to proceed. And so um, with that, um, I know I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna lean to Paul and when uh what the date is for the, how many days we have to deliberate uh to remind me. I'm sure we can set up a meeting before we get close to the deadline, but I'm just curious if you can recall those.
Uh, yeah, you have, presuming that you are about to close the public hearing, you will have forty days from tonight to complete your deliberations and render a decision. Under the applicable case law, rendering a decision means that you actually vote on the project. Once you have voted on the project, whether it's tonight or forty days from now, as soon as you have rendered your decision, you have fourteen days to file your decision in the town clerk's office, your written decision.
Thank you, Paul, I appreciate that. Uh, you have uh, the question is, do I procrastinate writing a decision? Uh, you know, that's by kicking this down another week, I'm just kidding. Um, so on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to close the public hearing um and to um then set a uh date for the deliberation. So um, with that, I I would move uh to close this public hearing, uh I move to deliberations, so I have a second.
I second that.
Uh, I think I vote by roll on the closing of the hearing, um, Mr. Fitch.
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. McBride, aye. Uh, public hearing is closed. Um, for deliberations, um, we have to post that, I believe. Uh, Todd is not here, so and Mr. Callahan, I think it's his second miss, so he's out of this one. Lucky him, uh, but I think Todd uh will be part of deliberation. So I think we're gonna wait, we can do that by mail and we can communicate by by mail, email. Now, do we have to set another date for that right now, Paul?
Okay, Chairman, you you have to post your meeting forty eight hours in advance. You do not have to set the date specific tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna pause and setting the date for the next uh for the day of the deliberations, uh which is public. It's open to the public to listen, but they obviously can't participate. Uh, we will do that by email and and post and keep you uh apprised of when that is, when I can get the other board involved. So we we can find a convenient time. Um, I have some minutes administratively we need to vote on, but I don't know which ones they are right now and we're gonna kick that can, I think, to the next meeting, if that's uh good. For you, Jonathan, and Jonathan will approve the minutes next time, so.
Okay, fine.
Uh, I move to uh close this meeting.
I second that.
Wonderful, Mr. Fitch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
And Brian, aye, meeting is closed, thanks everyone, uh, talk to you soon.
Thank you.